Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December ninth, twenty twenty-five regular session meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to talk to council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to City Council. You'll see we have a light system right here. It's a three-minute system. After stating your name and address, you will see a green light appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. Additionally, written remarks may always be handed to the city clerk if you made a part of the official record. Copies of our ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. And prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Dennis Worsham with Lebanon Christian Church will provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for your leadership and service to our community, and thank you for this privilege to pray for you and to pray over the City Council meeting tonight. Let's pray together. Dear God, our heavenly Father, we offer all praise, glory, and honor unto you. We thank you for your mercy and grace. We humble ourselves before you. Lord, I thank you for Mayor Jones and the members of ours. May we each, as we are able, make the lives of others around us brighter and a little more joyous by sharing with others some of the blessings we have each received from your gracious hand. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Will you follow me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. At this time, I have a motion to excuse Councilman Win Tina Vic and Councilman John Ely from this meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded at this time. Open the vote.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Oh.
Is it working?
There it is.
There we go.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. We have one presentation this evening to honor several groups for their outstanding contributions to keeping our community clean and beautiful through the Adopt a Spot program. At this time, I would like to invite Frank James, Director of Public Works, to join me at the podium. We can have council join as well. Okay, sounds good. As council and the city manager come up. Where's Bob? Is Bob coming too? Yeah. Just bring everybody up. On behalf of the citizens of Newport News.
All the traffic improvements recommended by the TIA were included. Those include a two-hundred-foot eastbound right turn lane on Fort Eustis Boulevard widening or old Fort Eustis Boulevard serving the project to thirty-two feet, widening the old stable road entrance to the project, and then also conducting warrant analysis to build a traffic light if needed, once the project's fully built out. So per the TIA and the recent cut-thru report analysis that the city did, those improvements will help mitigate traffic impacts and provide safer access not only to the Wood Creek facility but to our project. To note about the portion of the old Fort Eustis Road that's serving our property, it's really a dedicated road just for our parcel of dead ends. It's going to be a right turn off Fort Eustis onto old Fort Eustis, so that will be kind of a dedicated ingress egress for just our parcel as well. And we believe that will disincentivize any cut-through through the Wood Creek neighborhood as well. So furthermore, the project is consistent with the current comprehensive plan and previous comprehensive plans that identify this parcel for R-seven medium density. This project is really exactly what the comprehensive plans have called for for this property. It's also compatible with surrounding uses with the Woods of Jefferson to the south of the property, which is an R-seven-three-story apartment complex abutting the Wood Creek neighborhood as well. That's consistent with the City Council goals of improving increased quality housing and consistent with the recent housing study and the desire to add twenty-one thousand new units by 2050, which calls for quite seven-hundred units per year. So in conclusion, this project before you tonight reflects extensive community input and a thoughtful design to address the concerns and mitigate any impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods while providing a quality product for the city. So thank you for your time. Respectfully request approval of the matter here tonight, and I'll be around for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Jack Claude, and then Latonya Clay, and then Alvin Keels, and we'll just keep going in that order.
Hello, I'm Jack Claude.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm an engineer with Hager Gure.
Can you put the mic just turn it to you, sir? Yeah, thank you.
Better? And we're looking forward to doing the engineering for this project. There've been some discussion in the past about drainage on all projects, no matter where they are, what we do. They're all done the same. We measure the ground, see which way water wants to run. If it's if stormwater's trying to run off-site, we collect it at the property line, divert it back to the BMP, treat it, and then release it. If water's coming from off-site onto our property, we accept all of that and run it through our BMP and run it off-site. So no matter which case may be, we're improving the drainage all the way around. That's about all I wanted to say tonight, but if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Latonya Clay, then Alvin Keels, then Thomas Retner.
Good evening. I'm Latonya Clay and I reside in Newport News, Virginia. Approving a high-density development with a single access point creates an avoidable public safety hazard. If an emergency happens, the city is responsible for that preventable risk. This site's drainage challenge and narrow roads are not suitable for multifamily density. Approval creates long-term maintenance costs and the residents' risk that the city will inherit. This rezoning is not a major, oh, excuse me, is not a minor change. It's a dramatic shift in the land use intensity that breaks planning consistency and invites incompatible future development. The this rezoning is, excuse me, the future land map does not support the increase in density at this location. Prophers sound reassuring, but they contain no enforceable timelines or performance standards. Once density is approved, the city cannot force the developer to keep their promises. Instead, why not offer senior housing or townhomes or a medical office in that area instead? This project creates long-term costs for the city that outweighs any short-term tax revenue. For instance, more wear and tear on the roads, which the city has to maintain, more school enrollment, which means higher taxpayer costs because the schools are already strained, drainage failures, which would result in future lawsuits or repairs paid by the city, and apartments rarely generate enough tax revenue to cover service demand. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvin Keels, then Thomas Retnauer, and then Anton Recon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here. I'm the developer for this project, myself and my partner Alan Iverson, who's not here tonight. I wanted to come to speak on the project and the progress that we've made over the last ten months. Obviously, this project was presented back in February, and it didn't pass, and it was mainly because of a lack of community engagement and direction from the from the community. And so what we've done over the last ten months is we've met with the community, and we've gotten a lot of input, some positive, some negative, and we've tried to address some of the concerns the best that we can. But I'm here mainly to let you guys know that I'm here if you have any questions. Also, I want, you know, everyone here that we're committed to developing a very nice project if approved. We're definitely going to hold up our end of the bargain, and we look forward to bringing something extremely nice to Newport News. So if anybody has any questions, I just wanted to come up and let you guys know that I am here and present. And I have all of my other engineers and architects here as well, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thomas Retnauer, then Anton Recon, then Tanya Recon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Tom Retnauer, I'm the architect for the project, and I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anton Recon, and then Tanya Recon, and then Sean Fowler, will be the last one. And if I've missed you after those three and you wanted to speak instead of for section I, just let me know.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and the members of City Council. My name's Anton Rikun. I'm the resident of a resident of the Wood Creek community. As we revisit this zoning request, I believe it's important to start with one simple fact. In February last year, sorry, this year, council reviewed this same project and voted against it. In that time, not many things have changed. We are not opposed to the development. We are currently, the current zoning is a single-family house, and what we oppose is placing a high-density apartment complex on land that is not designed for, not designed or saved for it. In a 2023 independent study, right, a 2023 independent study ranked the Jefferson Avenue and Fort Eustis Boulevard intersection as the ninth deadliest out of eighty-one intersections in Newport News, and this project would inject hundreds of additional daily vehicle movements into the same area. There are only two narrow lanes at Fort Eustis Boulevard with with no room for widening or tearing lanes. Traffic funneling into a single exit from one hundred and twenty units and likely two hundred-plus residents creates a predictable safety hazard. Yet, the traffic analysis provided does not account for real-world behavior or the increased complexity of merges, lane changes, and morning congestion. When we when we raised these concerns, we were told it's only one hundred and twenty units, as if every unit contains a single a single person. But the reality is that this development places hundreds of new residents where currently there's only one home. The data used does not reflect this change. Moreover, we have been told that a traffic signal will only be considered after accidents occur. That is not an acceptable safety plan. And additionally, we have not seen any economic studies, and we do not know how this development would affect long-term city costs, additional roadwork, school capacity, traffic control devices, or emergency services. And in closing, I would like to say this: We're not anti-development. We are asking for responsible planning based on accurate data, complete prophers and public safety, not assumptions. For all these reasons, we respect.
Into this apartment complex from Fort Eustis Boulevard. It has nothing to do with the main concern that we have for safety. And the problem that we're going to have here is, as one of your engineers said, no matter what you do with the data, it doesn't always do a good job of predicting human behavior. So what do you think's going to happen when you're trying to exit your apartment that you're paying for, and you're waiting for the tenth or fifteenth time in traffic for someone to turn left, you're probably going to behave in a way that could be a little bit dangerous, because you've got to get somewhere, you're in a rush, so on and so forth. So the main issue that I've noticed here is we're just citizens. This is a problem that people face all across the United States, no matter where they live. We don't have endless amounts of money. We don't have access to our own engineers. We don't have access to our own traffic impact study. So the problem with decision-makers, or in this case, the problem that we have is the decision-makers, you all, have a choice to make. You're going to listen to anecdotal and subjective feedback based on locals, such as me, or you're going to listen to, you know, to the individuals who say, hey, this plan is okay, right? This plan's okay. We're experts. We've done this. But the data that I've seen doesn't really pass the sniff test. I've spoken with engineers and people in different cities who can't speak to you tonight due to politics. They're not going to stand against you guys here. Spoken with local EMS, local firefighters, none of them would co-sign on this. But we're just here for the people who don't have voices, and we're just wanting you to make a decision that will hopefully be in mind with public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other individuals that that signed up for citizen comments that wanted to speak to this? I don't want to skip anyone before I make a motion. Did you want to speak to this one? Yeah, just come on. Just let me know your names, so I can mark you off of the citizen comments.
Good evening, Councilmember, City Staff, and fellow residents. My name's Jonathan Nervsvega. I live in the Wood Creek neighborhood. I'm Long Island. I'm here today to express serious concerns regarding the proposed Iverson lining apartment development at six-two-eight-six-three floor at Fort Eustis Boulevard. I want to be clear, this is not opposition for sake of opposing development. This is about protecting neighborhood safety, infrastructure stability, property values, and the long-term well-being of our community. Number one is overcrowding local schools. High-density apartments generate significantly more students per acre than single-family neighborhoods. According to the National Multifamily Housing Council and Urban Institute, units produce three to four times more school-aged children per developed acre. Overcrowded schools lead to lower teacher-to-student ratios and rezoning pressures. Number two, increased strain on emergency services. High-density developments statistically generate more police fire and emergency calls. A study by International Association of Chiefs of Police shows multifamily complexes average two to three times more service calls per household than single-family areas. More calls mean longer response times, higher cost to taxpayers, increased workload for already-stressed personnel. Source IACP calls for service in multifamily housing. Number three, infrastructure, water, and sewer overload. The water, sewer, and roadway systems in this area were designed for low density residential use. The American Society of Civil Engineers notes that high-density developments often require costly expansions to waterline capacity, sewer systems, and road surface durability. These upgrades frequently become taxpayer-funded, not developer-funded. Source ACSC Infrastructure Capacity Standards Report, four traffic congestion safety hazards: Old Fort Eustis Boulevard already experiences congestion and limited visibility in certain stretches. The Federal Highway Administration reports that adding large multifamily developments to two-lane corridors increases rear-end collisions, pedestrian accidents, congestion during peak hours by eighteen to thirty-two percent. This threatens the safety of drivers and children walking or biking in Wood Creek. Source FHWA Trip Generation and Traffic Impact Study guidelines. Increased flooding, stormwater issues, locations upslope from several Wood Creek homes. High-density construction dramatically increases impervious surfaces like parking lots and rooftops. The EPA confirms that this leads to higher stormwater runoff, more erosion, localized flooding, and contamination of downstream waterways. Source US Environmental Protection Agency Stormwater Runoff Impacts. Number six, loss of neighborhood privacy. Peace and Green Buffer. Removing the tree buffer and adding multi-story buildings will look directly into Wood Creek bike yards, increase light pollution, increase HVAC and vehicle noise, reduce the natural sound barrier and wildlife habitat. The American Planning Association warns that abrupt zoning transitions, such as placing high-density buildings next to single-family homes, create long-term conflicts and reduce neighborhood cohesion. Source APA Zoning Best Practices. Seven, decline in neighboring property values. Multiple economic analyses show large, high-density complexes near single-family communities can cause two to seven percent property value decreases in nearby homes. That it?
Yeah, about ten seconds. You can finish up.
This is not speculation. This comes from the Journal of Urban Economics, the National Bureau of Economics Research, and regional case studies in multiple states. Source NBR Report on Spillover Effects and Multifamily Housing. I have a last one. Future zoning creep in this project is approved. It becomes precedent for additional multifamily developments in this corridor. The Lincoln Institute of Land Policy notes that once a high-density rezoning is approved, it becomes significantly easier for future developers to claim the area is now transitional, opening the door to more apartments. Source Lincoln Institute municipal zoning proceedings. In conclusion, Wood Creek is not anti-growth. We are pro-responsible development. Infrastructure limits, school capacity, environmental protections, and neighborhood character, the safety of residents, are all vital concerns for us. The proposed Iverson lining project fails in all these areas. I respectfully ask the council to deny this development and currently propose end work with the community to pursue solutions that fit the scale, safety, and character of Wood Creek and Newport News. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Motion carry, five zero.
Moving and seconded. Any discussion?
Motion carry, five zero.
Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page sixty-six, item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit Charlie Uniform dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-eight to Ivy Baptist Church trustees to allow for the operation of electronic display sign in conjunction with the community facility totaling one point oh-nine acres zoned R-four. At this time, are there any speakers? I see we have none. Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion?
Motion carry, five zero.
Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Page one forty-two, item E4, request adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning ordinance text amendment Zulu Tango dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-six, amending and reordaining City Code Chapter Forty-five, Article Five, General Regulations, to modify the acreage required for self-service ice vending units, Section Forty-five dash five-three-zero. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir, but I believe they're both for questions only.
Okay. Any questions from City Council? Hearing none. Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Page one forty-two, item E4, request adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning ordinance text amendment Zulu Tango dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-six, amending and reordaining City Code Chapter Forty-five, Article Five, General Regulations, to modify the acreage required for self-service ice vending units, Section Forty-five dash five-three-zero. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir, one speaker.
Diane Davis?
Is there a, okay. No, there's no rush. No worries. Take your time.
Hi, I'm Diane Davis. I just want to say I appreciate City Council taking this up and considering the fact that we need more acreage to get these ice vending machines on the ground. These machines are used by private citizens, restaurant owners, and OSHA has now required that contractors provide their employees ice. So we are the only way that people can get affordable ice, and lowering the acreage limit for these machines to be put on the ground allows us to get more of these machines on the ground, allows others who also want to get into this business, put the machine on the ground. So I really appreciate y'all doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion? I have one comment. I know the staff worked really hard to get this done, so thank you for everyone that was involved, whether it was planning and zoning and economic development. And this is, I think, a good thing for the city, so excited to support this. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page one fifty-one, item E5 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute and submit to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, the State of Newport News, twenty-twenty-five Solid Waste Management Plan in compliance with Title ten point one, Chapter fourteen of the Code of Virginia, nine Victor Alpha Charlie two-zero dash one-three-zero dash one-seven-three. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Item E3, request adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit Charlie Uniform dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-nine to Wood Roads LLC and Green Clean Auto Wash to allow for the construction operation of a car wash facility on a one-point-five-seven acre parcel located at six-seven-one J. Clyde Morris Boulevard. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir, but I believe they're both for questions only.
Okay. Any questions from City Council? Hearing none. Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Page one forty-two, item E4, request adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning ordinance text amendment Zulu Tango dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-six, amending and reordaining City Code Chapter Forty-five, Article Five, General Regulations, to modify the acreage required for self-service ice vending units, Section Forty-five dash five-three-zero. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir, one speaker.
Diane Davis?
Is there a, okay. No, there's no rush. No worries. Take your time.
Hi, I'm Diane Davis. I just want to say I appreciate City Council taking this up and considering the fact that we need more acreage to get these ice vending machines on the ground. These machines are used by private citizens, restaurant owners, and OSHA has now required that contractors provide their employees ice. So we are the only way that people can get affordable ice, and lowering the acreage limit for these machines to be put on the ground allows us to get more of these machines on the ground, allows others who also want to get into this business, put the machine on the ground. So I really appreciate y'all doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion? I have one comment. I know the staff worked really hard to get this done, so thank you for everyone that was involved, whether it was planning and zoning and economic development. And this is, I think, a good thing for the city, so excited to support this. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page one fifty-one, item E5 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute and submit to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, the State of Newport News, twenty-twenty-five Solid Waste Management Plan in compliance with Title ten point one, Chapter fourteen of the Code of Virginia, nine Victor Alpha Charlie two-zero dash one-three-zero dash one-seven-three. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Motion approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page two thirty-eight, item E6 is a request to adopt an ordinance vacating a portion of an existing fifteen-foot perpetual right-of-way easement located at one-two-four-nine-zero Jefferson Avenue, fifteen feet sanitary sewer easement located at one-two-five-zero-zero Jefferson Avenue. At this time, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Item E7 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the vacation of approximately five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one square feet portion of right-of-way located at the corner of Denvey Boulevard and Pocahontas Drive. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
Move it up.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page two fifty, item E8 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located at one-seven-one-zero Ivy Avenue to Javisa Knight. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Item E9 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a lease by and between the city and the Warwick County Historical Society Incorporated for use of office space located in the one-eight-one-zero Warwick County Courthouse. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Item E10 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a lease by and between the city of Newport News and the Hugh S. Watson Jr. Society of Tidewater, Virginia, for the use of office and meeting space on the first floor of the one-eight-eight-four Warwick County Courthouse. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Motion adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items: Page two seventy-nine, minutes of the work session on November twelfth, point twenty-five. Page three-two-five- Page three two five, minutes of the regular meeting of November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Page three fifty, resolution changing the locations of select regular meetings of council for calendar year 2026. Page three five three, resolution appropriating $100,000 from the local criminal justice training academy fund to support NNPD training. Page three five eight, resolution appropriating $931,029 in VDOT Highway Safety Program funds. Page three sixty-two, resolution appropriating $1,240,000 of fiscal year 2026 Department of Transportation congestion air quality funds. Page three six nine, resolution appropriating $16,354,759 of the fiscal year 2026 VDOT Smart Scale Grant Program. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items F-one through F-seven all inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I do have some discussion. I just want to say, I know there's a lot of VDOT appropriations that we did last time. Just, that's a lot of work that's been done and looking forward to what that has done for our community. Any further discussion at this time? Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page three seven five, item G-one, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G-one is a request to approve a resolution adopting the third edition of the city's engineering design criteria manual, which has been updated to reflect current engineering practices, regulatory requirements, and climate resilience standards. I recommend approval.
I see we have no speakers. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page four five one, item G-two, Mr. Manager.
Item G-two is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing a right-of-way encroachment and authorizing the city manager to execute an encroachment agreement with Huntington Ingalls Incorporated for the construction and maintenance of the Thirty-seventh Street Garage Pedestrian Bridge. I recommend approval.
I see we have no speakers. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page four six five, item G-three, Mr. Manager.
Item G-three, the first of two items, is a request to approve a resolution granting jurisdictional approval for the Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds for the benefit of Stewart Gardens Housing Partners LP. To support this, VITUS is requesting the Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority to issue housing revenue bonds of up to $45 million to finance renovation, rehabilitation, and improvements for low and moderate-income residents. I recommend approval.
I see we actually do have speakers. Uh, we have Samantha Cullen for questions only. Do we have any questions at this time from city council?
Is this the company? Is Samantha a member of the company?
Yeah.
I do have a question. Part of the, I guess, agreement is the investment of $50,000 annually, and this is for-
For resident services?
Yeah, for resident services. Uh, do you already have a organization that you're going to work with?
Yeah.
I really do appreciate you bringing that for, for item three and four.
Yeah, we're working with Pastor Swan with Ivy Community Outreach.
Okay.
They've adopted the community over the past ten years. We figured they were the natural fit to continue that and provide additional services.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, is there further questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
And is there, Ms. Carletta Lane is here as a comment?
Hey, good evening.
Don't be nervous, it's a good time.
All right. Um, I'm the property manager at Stewart Gardens, um, and I'm here today on behalf of the residents and the employees who serve the community. We respectfully request your approval for a much-needed rehabilitation. The property hasn't been rehabbed since the 1980s, and we need your help. Um, our community needs your support. Approving this rehabilitation will help us provide a safe, modern, um, housing for families who calls Stewart Gardens their home. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any further speakers? Okay, none. Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Um, and I know we don't have the members of the South District here tonight, um, but I know that they would also be in favor of this, and this is good for Stewart Gardens and to rehab the entire property, so excited for this to move forward. Page four seventy-one, item G-four, Mr. Manager.
Item G-four, the second of two items, is a request to approve a resolution granting jurisdictional approval for the Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds of $48 million for the benefit of Stewart Gardens to Housing Partners LP, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. I don't think we have any further questions, so, uh, motion, is there any speakers? Hearing none, motion approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page four seventy, uh, sorry, page four seven seven, item G-five, Mr. Manager.
Item G-five is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $2 million from the community development category of the fiscal year 2024 bond authorization in support of southeast community redevelopment. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just say, uh, I think this is, once again, a positive story for all that we're doing in the southeast community, and we're excited to continue to, uh, I know we use ARPA funds in the beginning, but just continue to make sure that we take care of the southeast. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page four eighty, item G-six, Mr. Manager.
Item G-six is a request to approve a resolution authorizing a grant to the Port Warwick Foundation to support a festival in the city of Newport News. Under Virginia law, the city may fund charitable organizations that serve residents and promote local resources. To support the foundation, the city plans to contribute up to $3,030,000 for a special arts and entertainment event on Memorial Day weekend, 2026, with funding provided under specific terms and conditions. I recommend this item for your consideration and appropriate action.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page four eight nine, item G-seven, Mr. Manager.
Item G-seven is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $3,030,000 of FY 2025 year-end surplus funds to the Port Warwick Foundation to support a festival in the city of Newport News. I recommend this item for your consideration and appropriate action.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, I'll speak to this. I just want to say one, thank you to all the hard work that's gone into this. I'm excited to see, uh, what's in store for the city next year. Uh, an economic impact, I think it's going to help drive a lot of growth for the entire community. So excited to be on this team and excited to see what we can actually put on. Uh, a lot of good things are happening in the city and glad to be a part of it. At this time, open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Page four ninety-four, item G-eight, Mr. Manager.
Item G-eight is a request to adopt an ordinance providing standing authorization for the duration of calendar year 2026 to issue up to $85 million in general obligation, general improvement refunding bonds. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carry, five zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, I think we've done enough tonight, so we'll have no appropriations. Uh, let's move over to citizen comments. Item I, I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. Jonathan Destrovaga. I definitely messed that up, apologies. Jonathan Destrovaga. Going once, going twice, okay. Tammy Washington? No? Okay. Marlin Campos? Good. Steven Romney? Good. Carolyn Jones?
Finally, somebody wants to talk to us.
We'll be here all night, yeah.
Um, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carolyn Jones. I live here in Newport News. I am a teacher in Newport News Public Schools. I'm here this evening to speak briefly, um, in part about my support for collective bargaining for all city employees. Um, I've actually only lived in Newport News a couple of months, but it's already been pretty eventful. Um, I only have three minutes to speak tonight, um, but if you want to go back and watch my school board speech from, uh, September, it was eventful. Um, I was about to quit after only four weeks of the school year, um, because teaching high school is a pretty unique pressure cooker. Um, you're dealing with stress from every single direction. The students, the parents, administrators, sometimes even your own, uh, colleagues if people are having a bad day. Um, and we are seeing more and more drains on our time from multiple levels, from the division level, whether it's go to this meeting, go to this training, go to this professional development, proctor this test, um, whether it's from the state level with new state initiatives for elementary literacy that put more and more strain on elementary teachers. Um, it's not very sustainable. Um, and when I talk to my colleagues about their plans for the next ten years, who's close to retirement, who's going to have kids, I worry that we're not going to have a functioning school division in ten years. I know that sounds a little dramatic, um, but I look at the state of things in Virginia in general. My background is in public policy. Um, I'm a bit of a career changer, and you're not going to have enough staff. You're not going to have enough teachers, you're not going to have enough school bus drivers unless something changes. I'm not going to pretend that collective bargaining is a magic wand. It's not. It's a hail mary. It's a tourniquet to stop the bleeding. And teachers, I know that teachers are not kind of directly under your purview, um, but if we feel this strongly about it, then I'm guessing that other city employees feel pretty strongly about collective bargaining as well. Um, so I want to encourage you to not just, you know, rubber stamp collective bargaining and allowing it for whoever. I, I encourage you to be a part of the conversation and participate actively in that when your constituents reach out to you, when your employees reach out to you. On a related note about having conversations, I have reached out to city council also with my concerns about proposals kind of being floated for a data center or two on the north side near Fort Eustis. Virginia already has over a third of the world's data centers. It is part of the reason why we are having to pay extra to import electricity from out of state. It is part of the reason why residential utility rates are going up. Enough is enough. We simply do not have the infrastructure for it. I have done a lot of research on this, um, and I encourage you to reconsider. I know business is important to our city, job growth is important to our city, um, but we have to be mindful of who we are as Virginia residents and not put additional strain on an already overtaxed utility system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Brackman, then Javon Bennett, and then I think it's Mary Voss.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Jones. City council and staff. I'm David Brackman, he/him, a Newport News resident, um, and activist here in support of the Newport News Educators Association's Red for Ed campaign. I join them in asking that council place on the agenda and then approve a resolution for collective bargaining. A framework by which people doing the work have more of a say in it is a good thing for keeping the work informed, effective, and sustainable. I believe the current bus driver shortage could have been avoided with collective bargaining. As appreciated as public comment is, the ability to act as a group in contract negotiation uh, would have provided greater leverage to address the safety, compensation, and accommodation issues that they raised at school board meetings that were not sufficiently addressed by the time that we could not make our commitments to get children to school on time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we added one. Those two, Javon Bennett, Mary Voss, and then Tom Bueller, was that just added?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Um, before I start, I just want to appreciate you guys for reaching out, uh, last month. Had some safety concerns, and y'all reached out, and hopefully we won't get those problems rectified. Um, so you may have already considered this or, um, have something to work, so forgive me if I'm talking on deaf ears, but I just wanted to say this. As a black man, we often get a negative connotation in society. We are role models, we fathers, and a beacon of hope, especially in destitute communities. We get chastised, told from an early age, we're not going to mouth nothing, but there was one black man in the early 2000s that gave us hope that we can reach an unfathomable goals, and that was Michael Vick. When I first got to Newport News, man, he was like a guy, like, there was no Vic slander tolerated. He was and still is the only football player ever that people was wearing his clique-designed shoes like Jordans. I can go on and on about what makes him so relatable, though, is that he come from where we come from. He been through trials and tribulations as an adult. He overcame, gave back, and always been genuine. He could be on any NFL coaching staff right now, NCAA, five power conference coaching staff, yet he chose to come close to home and coach HBCU. To me, that shows character. I'm saying all that to say this. Michael Vick deserves a major street name after him. It may not mean much to some, but to us, it's symbolic and important to us as black men. I just was back home in Philly in October, um, they changed a few of the street names with famous people who may have lived in the city but never really represented or did anything impactful in the city. It's a trend, as I see it, happening everywhere, but Vick, nobody has ever wrapped 757 Newport News, Virginia how Michael Vick has. Nobody. Representation in society matters, as we have historically been intentionally left out of a lot of things, and we need people from our culture to be celebrated as well. We still got statues and colleges and names of racist people, but Michael Vick is where we draw the line? Nah, we need to give that man his flowers. I actually don't know him personally, but let's be honest, Michael Vick Avenue does have a good ring to it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mary Voss, and then Tom Bueller.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Mary Voss, three fifty Williamsburg Court. Um, I'm a Newport News resident and an NNPS teacher and parent. I'm also a proud member of the Newport News Education Association. I'm speaking tonight in support of collective bargaining rights for both city of Newport News employees and for employees of Newport News Public Schools. Collective bargaining is not a radical idea. It's a proven practical tool that allows workers and employers to solve problems together. The United Nations considers collective bargaining a fundamental human right. Thirty-four out of fifty U.S. states already give their teachers and staff collective bargaining rights. Restrictions on public sector collective bargaining in southern states were developed during the Jim Crow era to prevent black workers from gaining political and economic power. This is not a legacy that Newport News should continue. Virginia is one of ten states in which public employees can gain collective bargaining rights if our employers on school boards and city councils vote in favor. if our employers on school boards and city councils vote in favor. Many V E A locals across the state have already secured collective bargaining rights for their staff and teachers, including the Richmond Education Association, Arlington Education Association, Falls Church, Prince William County, Loudoun, Fairfax, Montgomery County, Loud, let's see, Charlottesville, Albemarle County, and Harrisonburg. These localities have seen improved employee retention, increased workplace safety, and more stable labor relations. Here in Newport News, we rely on city workers and school employees every day. They maintain our infrastructure, provide emergency services, keep our neighborhoods safe, and educate our children. Yet these workers have no formal seat at the table when decisions are made about their working conditions, safety, and compensation. Research consistently shows that collective bargaining improves employee retention and reduces costly turnover. According to National Labor Studies, turnover in public sector jobs can cost employers between twenty and fifty percent of an employee's annual salary. By giving workers a structured, professional way to address concerns, collective bargaining saves money in the long run. City council already has the authority to grant collective bargaining rights to city employees, and because city council controls funding for Newport News Public Schools, you all also play a critical role in ensuring that school employees are not left behind. Our teachers, bus drivers, custodians, and support staff deserve professional respect and to have our voices heard just like city workers do. I urge you to take action to authorize collective bargaining for city employees and to work with the school board to allocate the necessary funding so that Newport News Public School employees can have those same rights. Thank you for your time and for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Bueller. I'm probably messing up your last name. Apologize. Is it closed?
Yes, it's fine. Burley is how you say it.
There it is.
It's not closed. Just a quick question. I heard of a proposal for some apartments to be possibly built at Jefferson Avenue and Littleston Lane, and I haven't really been able to find any news on the website about that, and I don't know if that's still...
Yeah, that was the first action tonight.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you repeat that? That's a different...
Was that a different one?
Not Littleston Lane.
Yeah, Littleston Lane or Jefferson Avenue.
I'm not sure. We can, if you stay after, we can have staff come and find you.
Yeah, okay, cool.
We'll come find you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no worries.
Actually...
Yeah, we'll still, yeah. Just do it afterwards, yeah.
Almost got your floor.
That's all I have for citizen comments. Our next item is new business. Mr. Manager.
None, sir.
City attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Long?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is the last council meeting of the year, and it's in the central district, so to speak. So I really do appreciate it, everyone. I want to thank Red for Ed. I don't know if y'all were coming as Red for Ed, but I want to thank y'all for being here tonight. I will say Dr. Graves served on the collective bargaining task force the city council authorized. And right now, we have the report that we received back from the task force, and it's being looked at during, through our council subcommittee, which is called Financing Governance. And we meet the third Tuesday of every month, so welcome you to attend. It's really, we're really being diligent on working through potential ordinance for collective bargaining. So I do really appreciate people coming out and speaking in favor of collective bargaining. And then last thing is, just want to wish everyone a happy holiday. Like I said, it's the last meeting of the year. Enjoy your holiday and in your new year, and look forward to seeing y'all next January. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to echo the comments of Councilman Long, just want to thank everyone for coming out, especially our partners with Newport News Public Schools and N N D A. We appreciate you being here today and voicing, you know, and talking about your mission and improving education here in the city of Newport News, not only for our children, but for our educators and support staff. I mean, it takes a village, and education is one of the main priorities of our council and I know of the community, so thank you for everything that you do. Want to thank everyone else for coming out. I want to thank city staff for a pretty amazing year. We've accomplished a lot. I know you guys have been very busy. This council keeps you guys busy. And you always answer the call, and we truly appreciate that. So please, I ask that you guys take a break, get a breather. And I heard that there's going to be an extra day off, I think, the twenty-sixth this year, so please take advantage of that, spend some time with friends and family. I just want to thank our council members as well for all the amazing work and dedication that they've shown towards our city. And I want to thank my constituents, our constituents, for giving us this incredible honor and opportunity to serve you and help plan the, you know, the direction and the future of this wonderful city. And so, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Harris?
Yes, and I also want to thank everyone for coming out on tonight. And mine, just real simple, I just hope and everyone has a blessed, safe holiday as we close out twenty twenty-five, going into twenty twenty-six, as we expect a lot of great things to happen in the new year. But more importantly, as it has already been shared with everyone, just make sure you hug on your families, love on one another as we close out the year and the holiday season. It's always a special time of year for so many of us, and then those of us that have lost loved ones throughout the course of the year. I know it can be a challenging time, so continue to show peacefulness towards one another, grace, love, as we close out this year and this holiday season. And that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you to everyone who was able to make it tonight. I'm glad you were here and able to make it safely. Share your concerns, share your opinions. We truly appreciate you as we close out this year. I hope that you have happy holidays, a safe one, and please be safe and hug on somebody. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. I'll be brief. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in the holiday tree, Christmas tree lighting. I know I've already said it in the work session, but everyone that was involved, all of the departments, all of our individuals in communications and visiting Newport News and tourism, everyone that was involved, our public safety individuals, just thank you. I thought that was an amazing event. It was good to bring everyone, our diverse community, together. We had a good time at the tree. Mario came at the end. It was really just an amazing time for the entire city, so thank you. You know, and a lot of people have asked me, what do I think the future for Newport News next year is? And I've been giving it a lot of thought, as this is the last council meeting. And so I think I have four or five things is what I see what's going to happen next year for the city. Number one is we are going to continue to build more housing, whether that's tiny homes for our unhoused population, whether that's homes for our Navy sailors that are downtown. But we have a critical need to meet. We will continue to do that as a city council. Number two, we will continue to invest a record amount of funds into our public school system. This council has already done that. We will continue to do that, and that includes school construction. Number three, we will continue to invest in gun violence techniques. I know we had a rough spot over the last two weeks, but I believe we're going to end the year under a record amount of homicides, so thank you to everyone that's involved in that. Number four, on a staff level, we're going to continue to attract and recruit the top people in their field. And I know looking on to the right side, I see the best in their field. So to all the, obviously to Allen, but to all the deputy city managers, the department heads, just thank you for being on this team with us. I know we ask a lot of you, but you always rise to meet the occasion. And finally, we are going to deliver what I believe is a world-class festival next year. I believe that Newport News, we deserve to be in the same category as our South Side counterpart. So I'm excited to see the future. You'll have to come to my State of the City in March to get more information, but excited to be on this team with all of you. I think the vice mayor called us the Young Wolves, and I'll appreciate that moniker. But with that, Merry Christmas. Happy holiday, even you, Rob. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. We'll see everyone next year. Thanks.